I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sorel?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Counselor Grasso?
Here.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Here.
Counselor Panalakis?
Here.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
And Counselor Whitehouse?
Here.
I'm going to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silent prayer in memory of Juanita Hanson, who is the assistant mayor's mother who passed away last week. And also, for the pledge of allegiance following will be Steve Marshawn, and it will end with "God Bless America."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're chanced, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Before I start the meeting, I've just got a few words to say. Counselor, I think it's time to put this budget to rest. We have had a public hearing, we have had numerous work sessions, and our last work session, we took a straw vote for auction A, and it passed unanimous. On the parking meter side regarding the garage, the vote was eight to one. You've got to realize, people out there, there were no layoffs, which was a wonderful thing, that's what I kept saying, no layoffs, no layoffs. And there will be a reduction in the tax rate. Right now, we're looking at 14 cents, and that could always change, you never know what might come in that might change it. Counselors, you all realize, if this budget is not passed tonight, then the city manager's budget goes into effect. I'm going to ask Bob, before I open up the meeting, to explain what the charter says.
Your honor, the charter outlines in some detail the process which will be used for the adoption of a budget by the city. It begins with a statement that no later than 45 days before the end of the fiscal year, the city manager shall submit a budget. It provides in detail that the manager will provide a budget message with that budget explaining it. It says that the budget shall provide a complete financial plan of all city funds and activities for the ensuing fiscal year, and except as required by law or this charter, shall be in such form as the manager deems desirable or the council may require. Most importantly, for this evening's purposes, Charter Section 7.13 reads as follows. The budget shall be finally adopted not later than the last day of the fiscal year currently ending. Should the council take no further action on or prior to such day, the budget, as submitted originally by the city manager, shall be deemed to have been finally adopted by the council. So the original form of the budget which the council received would become the city's budget if the council doesn't basically do something different tonight. I think a significant addition to the actual budget language is that at the time, the council should be aware that at the time the city manager put together his budget for next year, he could not have been aware of changes in educational funding which were going to be adopted by the legislature after that date. And what the council should be aware is, if the city manager's budget, as originally drafted, is adopted, then the way the educational funding plan works into it is that when the city goes, the Department of Revenue Administration that set the tax rate, DRA, will simply add on the educational funding component that was not otherwise available at that date, add it on to the city's tax rate. Is that it, your honor?
Thank you, Bob, very much. Now we're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. First, I'm going to ask all of you, whoever makes the motion on the resolutions, please read the resolution to the people sitting at home. Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 1, 4, 9, Section 7, Period 102, Parking Meter Zones, Section 7, Period 105, Parking, section 7, Period 405, Authority Given to Regulate Areas, and Section 7, Period 901, Penalties, Proposed Adjustments to the Parking Meter Rates and Fines. What does your wish?
Move third and final reading?
Second.
Discussion?
Your honor.
Yes?
Yes. Your honor, I'd like to separate the municipal fees from the parking garage fee, because we're not on that right now.
You're not on that yet.
Well, when we do get on, I'd like to make it known that I'd like to separate that. Okay?
And you also realize, straw vote, eight voted?
Yes, and I-
Who are the opposite ones?
I had just a question, that's all.
Okay.
So I'd like to make it known early, that's what I wanted to-
Just a question. Okay, very good. Being no other discussion, I think perhaps we should do all of these on the roll call?
Yes.
If you-
I think we should.
You certainly can.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Very good. Adoption of the budget resolutions for FY July 1st, 2004, to June 30th, 2005. The first resolution is number one, municipal fees, including parking garage fees.
So, your honor, yeah, your honor?
Right, you're making the motion.
I'd just like to make a motion to separate the parking garage fees from the regular fees.
Did he get a second on that? Being no second, I'm sorry, Harold. Who would like to make the first resolution and read it?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution number one, be it resolved that the attached fee schedule Exhibit A is found to be reasonable and appropriate and is recommended for adoption. The fees denoted with an asterisk has been changed to all others are incorporated for convenience. That these fees attached to Exhibit A shall be effective July 1st, 2004.
Second. Very good. Discussion, yes, John?
Just a piece of housekeeping, just to make it a lot easier, what we did, Assistant Mayor is, if I, we actually highlighted it rather than asterisks. They were asterisks in your original one?
Yes.
Okay, and so they're highlighted now, I apologize for that.
Very good. Discussion? All ready for the vote?
Roll call, please.
There'll all be roll calls, Harold.
Okay. Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Very good. And now we're down to resolution number two, the general fund expenditures. What does your wish, councilor?
Your honor?
Yes, Counselor Grasso.
I moved that we, a resolution making appropriations of sums for all the necessary general fund expenditures for the operation of the several general operating departments and services for the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. By the city council, that they appropriate the sum of $68,672,202 to defray the current general fund expenditures for the city for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005, for the specific purpose stated in the general budget adopted. The sum to be appropriated from general fund revenues. And would you like me to read the amount?
Yes, yes.
The municipal, $27,000, $27,114,263. Schools, $29,38,236, for a total of $68,672,202.
Thank you. John, are you missing something?
I'm all set.
I'll second, I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, discussion? Being no discussion, we're ready for the roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Now we're down to resolution number three, the sewer fund expenditures. Who would like to make that motion and read it?
Your honor.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes, your honor, thank you. Resolution number three, 2004, a resolution making an appropriation sums of money for the all necessary sewer fund expenditures for the operation of the sewer system of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. Resolved by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, assembled as follows. That there is hereby appropriated the sum of $10,163,509 to defray the cash usage needs of the sewer funds of the city of Portsmouth, and that there is hereby appropriated the sum of $1,045,570 to be tracked in non-transferable line items to defray the non-cash expenditures of the sewer fund of the city of Portsmouth. That there is a total budget sum appropriated of $11,209,79 that the sewer uses charge effectively July 1, 2004, is $4.070.
Thank you. We all ready for the vote?
Second.
Oh, sorry about that.
Counselor Reynolds?
Counselor Reynolds, would you like to make your second?
Just a second, yeah.
Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Panalakis?
Can I just ask, I thought the increase, is there an increase in this?
Yes, there is.
The amount?
The increase is, on the sewer fee, is 10 cents or 2 percent over last year.
Okay. I thought it amounts to about 10 cents.
10 cents, and that's what would be on the rate, and it's a 2 percent increase over last year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I think then we're all ready for the vote.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Very good. Now we're down to our resolution number four, water fund expenditures. Who would like to open that up? Steve?
Move to pass resolution number four, 2004, a resolution making appropriation of sums of money for all necessary water fund expenditures for the operation of the water system of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. Resolved by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, assembled as follows. That there is hereby appropriated the sum of $7,622,182 to defray the cash usage needs for the water fund of the city of Portsmouth, and that there is hereby appropriated the sum of $749,634 to be tracked in non-transferable line items to defray the non-cash expenses of the water fund of the city of Portsmouth. That there is a total budget sum appropriated of $8,371,818. That the water use or charge effective July 1st, 2004, is $1.57.
Did I get a second on that?
Second, your honor.
Very good. We all ready for discussion? Being no discussion, we're all ready for the roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Your honor, before we go, just an informational item, following up on Counselor Panalakis' last question with the sewer department, this is a 2 cent increase, or 1.3 percent over last year.
Okay, very good. Resolution number five, special revenues for necessary expenditures.
Madam Mayor, resolution number five, I move a resolution making appropriation of sums of money from special revenues and designated fund balances for necessary expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2004. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, 2005, I'm sorry. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, assembled as followed. That there hereby appropriated supplemental funding from the general fund designated health insurance fund balance to defray the expenses of health insurance costs in excess of the general fund appropriations for health insurance premiums for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. That there is hereby appropriated supplemental funding from the general fund designated leave at termination fund balance to defray the expenses of leave at termination in excess of general fund appropriations for leave at termination for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. That there is hereby appropriated supplemental funding from any other general fund designated fund balance to defray expenses for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. That there is hereby appropriated any sums received from all other special revenues received, but not limited to federal, state, and local grants and donation for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2004, that there, 2005, I'm sorry. That there is hereby appropriated any sums received from special revenue sources to a maximum of $18,900,000 for the purposes of which such sums may be lawfully expended.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Second, all right, very good. Discussion? Being no discussion, we're all ready for the roll call.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
The next resolution, I'm not going to make you read it all, so you can just, you know, put a little shot thing in. It's resolution number six, investment policy.
All right, make a resolution-
Counselor.
Approving an investment policy for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005. Resolved by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, assembled as follows. That the following investment policy is hereby approved for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2005, in conformance with state law.
Second.
Being no discussion, we're ready for the roll call vote.
Your honor, could the city attorney probably address this to, so the public can be more aware of what's taking place here?
What it's all about, okay. Bob?
Well, I do not draft the investment, the investment policy, you want to?
I can speak to that. This is an investment policy that's been in place for a number of years. It really deals with how the city invests its finances. There are certain restrictions, as you can see, from the investment policy. This came out of a number of years ago when there were some problems with some municipalities in other states in the United States, and many, and many states require now investment policies for all municipal governments.
Thank you, John.
Very good. I think we're all ready for the roll call.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Grasso?
Yes.
Counselor Farini?
Yes.
Counselor Marshawn?
Yes.
Counselor Panalakis?
Yes.
Counselor Hines?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Sorel?
Yes.
Unanimous?
I definitely want to thank the councilors for the great job that they've done over the past three, four months on this budget. I especially want to thank Mr. Bohinko, our city manager, for the hard work that he's put into this budget. Now we're down to reports and communications from city officials, which we don't have The city manager has no items that require action. The mayor has nothing. So now we're down to miscellaneous and unfinished business.
Move to adjourn?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
I do have a miscellaneous item, despite my desire to adjourn as well. I would, I don't know if this requires a motion, but I would like to request, and indeed make it a motion if need be, a motion to establish a work session at either prior to the July or August regular meetings, on consideration of the next fiscal year budgets, and how we might begin our review in that regard, what kind of review options we would have, and how we will actually proceed with the review of the budget. And I guess I'd make that as a motion if, and stop talking for a moment.
Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
If I might offer, Madam Mayor, my, my point being this, it was a, it was an illuminating process, and a lot of people put in a lot of hard work, but I've used the cliche already in private to my councilmates here, that it's sort of like the Rose Bowl parade, you want to start planning it once the other parade's over. And with that, I appreciate that opportunity, if we vote that way, and I'd ask you for your votes.
Very good. You know, Tom, we do have a joint budget committee. There's three that, from the council that are on that, and they start very early.
I understand that, Mayor, and I think that in my motion, what I would say is, in the first instance, I asked for it to be the council, I would anticipate that we would go in that direction-
Okay.
-in the future, but I, I wanted to keep it just to the council in the first instance, but I'm certainly, I would expect we would be involved with the-
Right. John?
It's, I think that's something that we have no problem with. I would just ask the council to let us have until September, just get through this, because we have, we close out our books at the end of the fiscal year, you know, we're now closing out all our books, we now have the auditors that will be coming in in July and August. So to ask the finance department and others to start coming together as we have our auditors coming in the door would be difficult. I would ask that sometime late September, early October, I'd be more than happy to sit down and do this, but I just think the staff is, you know, this went a little longer than we typically would, the auditors will be showing up in a couple days, and so, staff will be involved with that for July and August. So I would, I would ask the indulgence of the city council to maybe look at sometime in September, early October.
I would gladly modify my motion if I get a second with that modification, but I would like to see if we could get it going in September.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Counselor Whitehouse, did you have your answer?
Not speaking on the motion, speaking on another issue, your honor.
Oh, oh, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The joint budget committee will be meeting right after Labor Day, just so that everybody's aware of that. The joint budget committee is made up of three members of the school board, three members of the city council, the three police commissioners, and the three fire commissioners, so, just for your information. So we'll, we'll be kicking, we'll be doing what we're required to do by ordinance, starting in the, right after Labor Day.
And any councilor is welcome to attend. Definitely.
Anything, anything amendment?
We need to move the amendment, would you like it read again?
Sure.
Did you want to say something?
No, no, no.
Okay, would you read it?
I'll move the amendment.
The, the motion was to hold a work session regarding the process of the budget for next year in September.
Very good. Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All, anyone opposed? Harold? No?
No.
Okay. Very good.
Now move the motion as amended.
All right, now I'm going to move the motion. Thank God for Kelly. I'm going to move the motion for-
As amended.
As amended. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Being no discussion, we're ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Great. Okay, now we're down to miscellaneous and unfinished business. You've got something to, Harold?
Yes, your honor, I discussed this at a work session, and I'd like to bring it up just once more, and that is updating of our assessment. Certainly with the passing of the budget this evening, we're going to show a 14 cent decrease on the December bill, possibly, from our present bill that we've had in June. Now, if this is offset by spot reassessment throughout the city, as we've done in updating, I, I'd like to have a, a report back from our city manager, if this is really necessary. And I've inquired around some surrounding towns and cities, and they're not doing this. And I'd like to see, if we're ever going to show a savings in this city to the average taxpayer, this is the time to do it. This is the year, not next year or two years from now, but this year. And I, I still feel that this directive from the Department of Revenues is suggesting that you update yearly, not mandatory, and I think we should hold back on all spot reassessment, and just to look at the building permits, and go after the building permits, and the properties that have acquired building permits from April 1 until a week prior to the setting of the tax rate.
Harold, are you making that into a motion?
Your honor, you don't, you, I hope somebody else will make the motion, your honor.
Your honor? Well, wait a minute, I got hands going up. John wants to speak to it.
Well, I was, I was just going to suggest that, Harold, that you probably got the correspondence from the city manager that the rest of us did, and as to why we can't do anything at the present time, and, and I was just going to suggest, John, that you explain that, if it's okay.
If I, your honor, as you're well aware, Counselor, the legislature passed House Bill 426, which deals with the issue of annual updates on assessments. Even if, even as House Bill 426 is adopted, if the city council, and at this time, the city attorney's office has written a letter, and you'll get a copy in the mail, to the Department of Revenue Administration to determine when the effective date of this law takes place. Under the law, under House Bill 426, would require the city council to hold two public hearings, and actually vote to determine if they would be doing annual assessments. One of the things that we need to clarify would be for this year, this tax year, which would be April 1, 2004, which would effectively deal with fiscal year July 1, 2005. The municipal association and others have opined to the fact that it would be effective April 2005. That's because our April tax year went into effect before the bill actually was signed on June 11. Now, be that as it may, no matter what happens with the implementation of this bill, a couple things that we have to keep in mind, and even if we don't do an annual assessment, what we need to do is, we still need to keep properties proportional, because as you recall in the Sorel decision, there was a need to keep properties proportional. So hypothetically, if residential properties are higher than, and, and businesses and commercial are lower on a percentage basis, hypothetically, if, if residential is at 92 percent and business and commercial is at 86 percent from April 1, 2003 through April 1, 2004, the city has a duty to make those proportional. So even if you don't do an annual update, you need to at least bring, for example, the commercial up to 92 percent, so you're equal with residential. If you don't do that, then essentially what you're doing is you're overtaxing the, the residential properties. So I think you need to distinguish between the two things, the annual assessments and the proportionality. And that's what I tried to describe in my memorandum to the city council. The second thing is to remember that we will be going into what they call a certification year in 2006, and then we'll be on a regular schedule, which we have to do a full update. This law exempts the certification year, and the council has no say in the certification year where we bring in and do, we bring in and certify to our values.
where we bring in and, uh, do, uh, we bring in and certify to our values. So there's a certain period, I believe, Lauren, is it every four years, five years? Every five years that we have a certification year? So that exempts, uh, that year from the oversight of the, uh, city council. So, we're- at this point, the law went into effect on June 11th, it was signed by the governor. Uh, the staff has been working on trying to get clarification from the Department of Revenue Administration, and as we get it, we will continue to advise the, uh, city council. And if the advice comes back that it's effective, uh, for this fiscal year, then we'll have a long and, um, um, detailed discussion on where we go. But just remember, it's really two separate things. One is the annual assessments, everything gets up- updated. The second part is keeping things proportional within the community.
Uh, Counselor Reynolds?
Uh, nothing, your honor.
Cross that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, is everybody, uh, any other discussion? Okay. Great. No. Um, let's see. Uh, now we're down to Mayor Sherrell- oh, wait a minute, we're down to adjourn then, everybody?
I move adjourn.
All in favor?
Lauren's got something.
I had a question I would like to ask the, uh, the, uh, city attorney, that he would look into. I would like to know what authority the city council has to ask each department, including police, fire, school, um, and municipal, to have a, uh, performance audit done in each department before the next budget session? And if we had the authority to do that and decided to, I would like to know what that cost would be.
The cost?
Yes.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
I think there are two separate questions, and that's the one the city attorney can handle. One of the things you would have to then do is, for each of those, uh, performance audits, you would have to do a scope of services. Uh, we did one back, what, six or seven years ago in water and sewer, and, uh, we did one, uh, I think, uh, I'm not sure when the last one we did was, but what would happen is, the council would have to determine what department and what in that department they wanted to look at. Uh, for example, if you want to look at overtime or something like that, you would have to put that together in a scope of services, and then find a company that you'd want to come in, and then you'd receive proposals in, and you would interview, and we'd hire somebody to do that. Um, and, uh, so it would be on a case- you'd have to pick specifically the scope of services you want, to determine the cost.
No, I mean the cost of what it would cost us to have it done. Not like if we decided, if we were said we could do it. What would be the initial cost to say, we need a performance audit of each one of us, our departments, to show our taxpayers that-
Right.
-this amount of money for their tax bills unnecessary?
What would happen is, whoever bid on it or- or proposed on it would want to see a scope of what their work would be. What- what specifically are we looking at? And that's something the council could work out if they needed to.
I ju- I just think that, uh, um, town, uh, city of, of less- just about twenty-one to twenty-two thousand people in it, a sixty-eight million dollar budget is a lot of money. And we need to start looking, because the state is gonna send a lot of stuff down to us come January 1st that we're gonna pick up too. So I mean, I'd just like to be able to say to the taxpayers, we- every bit of this money that we are saying is in the budget is needed, and we've done this to prove it to you.
And one of the things I- if I might, your honor, one of the things that's important to realize, and I know Counselor Penderakis talked about the total, we've gotta realize that the county budget's in there too. And that's, uh, well in excess of three million dollars. And so if you look at that, and- and other things that are in that budget that is, uh, a fixed cost, you'll find that it probably would be something that if you wanted to do a review, we could pull out and- and work with somebody to look at those things and come down to write what would be the discretionary expenditures within the budgets.